Call today's select board meeting to order. PM, February 22. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the February 8th meeting?
Yes.
And I worked with Tammy about, I think I made a change, but I don't think it was anything too serious. I was just adding this zoom to the agenda, that's all.
I need a copy of them because my email is down.
Have you had a chance to read them at all?
No.
Uh.
I, I don't know what's wrong with that. I tried calling them and they can't seem to answer.
Tammy, do you have a copy of the minutes?
I have it on my computer.
Yeah, I've got it on my, can you read it off my Kindle?
Can I read?
Terry.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. You're gonna, okay. Terry's gonna read it off of Mr. Denton's phone.
The minutes. Yes. Thank you.
Gary, why don't you grab the, that pile of words and we'll move them on down. While Terry is reading that, there is a question. Any questions on management, Terry?
Yeah, what, what's it from? It doesn't say what it's from.
Okay. Point five five six.
So if the boys have to use their personal pickup to go down to Clark's. To, uh. You know, this one's 158 miles.
Hey Gary, can you talk into your mic, please?
Yeah, I will. Thanks, Sam. This is the last of. Do we know, will Mac be joining us tonight? He said the possibility of him not being here because of the snow we had. So they're applying. Oh, there's no pickup? He indicated that if he wasn't plowing, he was going to be here.
So Josh has one thing he wants to add to the minutes, right?
I, I talked with Kathy about that, just for clarification, to see if we did. We never actually ended up voting on that, so it's an article that I want to bring up tonight, just, just to make sure.
Okay.
Cause I wanted to check with, with Kathy before I, I said that that needed to be corrected. And she says we started talking about it, but never finished, which I would believe.
Then it should have been a motion?
Yeah, it should have been a motion.
Um, that was never taken to a vote. What's that? Gary said that he thought we had talked about using the town trucks to run for parks.
Not a park. Not parks.
To do the, run the town and check the roads.
On checking roads, he said.
Correct. Yeah, we never did, we never did take that to a vote, so, we did discuss it, but we never took it to a vote.
That's why I was wondering what the, what the fuel price is that we're paying right now. We are a tax exempt entity. So I'm guessing that our fuel price should be about, I'm gonna, is this $2.40 a gallon?
I just had, I just had, I just had, you only feel like two.
Right, right. Personally, or?
You have to pay tax on the, or the taxes in the state of Vermont, where these prices are high, where it's closer to, to, $2 a gallons. So I'm not exactly sure what those trucks are paying for a few miles or not.
Single, single numbers. If we're lucky. So. So until we vote on that particular line, it needs to stay as is. We did certainly discuss it there, but we did not vote on it.
So that was to whether or not to use their personal trucks?
Whether or not to use the town trucks instead of their personal trucks for road inspections.
They're all.
So, hey, my math may be wrong, but if we're getting five miles to the gallon.
Yeah, probably get around eight.
Okay. Mac would know better, but I'm just guessing. It's costing us $2 per gallon.
Are we doing on the.
They're giving 40 miles, 40 cents a mile. I think the reason was, we were back to some. Right, but either way, you're, you'd be 40 cents a mile, we'd be paying as opposed to 53 cents a mile. 55.6 cents a mile, that's a savings of 15.6 cents per mile. Uh, yeah, that after a year. And then if there's an issue found over, they don't have to come back from the shop, they have a truck, they can address the issue there. Then, uh, I make a motion that any and all road checking be done with the town trucks. That issues can be addressed immediately in town and and for the, for the price it will actually save us per mile, that's like five, five miles per gallon.
I'll second that.
Just playing the devil's advocate, um, there's also additional leverage on trucks we pay a lot of money for. I, I agree, um. You're paying for that truck on my wall.
Um, if we can get another year out of it, because we don't put as many miles on it, as I said, and just playing devil's advocate, we should discuss this stuff thoroughly.
Or I have a motion in a second. The business only be if they're like, if they're old and bad and they're trying to check the roads. And then they'd be able to, maybe the material to be made as, as they're out there. Not for, they're going to like Clark's or the person who's.
Any further discussion? Yeah. Motion has been made in seconded that for all road inspections during the winter months and storms and summer months, uh, that a line truck or company truck should be used for those inspections. Um, and the truck obviously should be ready for use for any of problems that could be found, unfortunately, or something completely off the ball that they will be proud for, obviously, that's the circumstances. Uh, is everyone okay with that, ready?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So. But this one, yes, yeah, no problem. And there's no way to discuss that, oh, yeah, and it's just, you're right, that just. That makes it. Yes, Terry, are you just, Terry wants to stare at it.
Okay. So this last one, we don't know if it's for.
Which one's that, Terry? Yeah, I think you should, I'm not sure that that is for, Eric. Um, I, I can only assume, uh, that they had the horse, uh, Baker's Field Conservation Commission, excuse me, had a meeting and they had it via Zoom and she's seeking reimbursement for setting up that meeting. And I didn't see that one, what was the cost on? $16. It didn't come out of their own account anyhow.
Yeah.
So, oh, she probably had to buy it since the subscription.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would say that we signed.
That's usual. I didn't sign it, I'm sure.
Well, he was gonna sign it, I asked him that, definitely.
Yeah, that's fine.
I missed that half one here, too. I'm good on that one. Did you have a chance to read the minutes, Terry?
Yes, I did.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from February 8th meeting as amended, Josh made a small correction. Top of the minutes, listen to me, just, that's my.
All the agenda, you said that.
Yeah, I don't know, Eric. I'll second. Make a motion to move the minute, uh, as a provision. One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? So. Now, there was, um, there was some discussion that Kathy came in and discussed Article 4 and explained to us that we would have 45 days from town meeting to make that decision. I thought that we had discussed that, after talking to Kathy, we have discussed it and there were made a decision on it officially.
I don't think there was a decision, no?
There is, well, there is, though. If Article 4 passes, I make a motion that we accept the voted position, whoever wins the vote via the town vote. And we appoint that person for the next three years. So if Article 4 passes, we respect the town vote and appoint that person for the next three years. Now, I personally may not be here all three years, so that needs to be made as a motion that that will happen and hold it up. Is anybody, I will second it. Motion, Sam, is there any discussion on your part? Do you, is that acceptable, or?
No, I agree, I agree with you. I think that's a good, um, solution.
And again, that's only their part of the four passes. If that doesn't pass, then that, so that, yeah, it's, it's null and void.
Correct, correct. I mean, that's a good solution for the possible.
So the motion has been made to, if Article 4 passes, to accept the will of the people on the ballot and appoint whoever wins that position by Australian ballot to the position for the next three years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So. Sarah Jo. We have a speaker microphone over by the blue chair in front of Tammy, just that way everybody knows. The electoral bill was being on the way.
Yep.
I'll start, Sarah, do it by saying, we have gotten so many compliments on how nice the park looked, not just from community numbers of Baker's Field, but, um, take care of drivers that are stopping at the stores, you know, on their way through, and just everybody's, it really brings a very positive, happy vibe to people coming to the park. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. I got a lot of similar feedback and I should have checked before I came to Mike to see how many views our video had gotten, but it's thousands. Yeah, thousands of views and even just yesterday, someone emailed me to ask how they can share the light with people who are out of state. It's still on our Baker's Field's from, um, website and available on Facebook, but we did get it almost positively questioned. I did have somebody ask me too, if we'd ever thought of doing live trees. Cause then, when I was, since I was just purchased, I never did. I'm sure we did that, maybe. Yeah, I think there would be a lot of which is like push challenges. That's what I have heard.
For, not.
Yeah, I have had a couple of people ask me about that, what they did. They would survive.
Right.
People saying, we're really willing to do with the, that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have, just, just so that you all know, um, everyone who adopted the tree, I told them that, you know, they would live there beginning of January, and then the goal would be that folks who decorate, they can decorate missions down. Obviously, about 40% of them are still decorating. I did send out another reminder this week, just to prompt people. I know that the weather has not been, it is not necessarily how it was kind of looking out and getting fixed.
It'll be warmer this weekend.
Yeah, so I, I did ask the remaining people to have their decorations taken down by the weekend and then as the permits will get the trees. You know, it's just, we're a whole.
Yeah.
So, the board has discussed, but not voted on making a contribution towards the lights, but reviewing the electrical bill of January costs less than $60. I, I, I don't, there's, in my opinion, you should not be held financially responsible for paying for the Christmas lights. I think town can handle that.
We did invest in the timers this year and I think that was.
I think that's it, yeah.
Good.
But they added a lot to the spirit of the town. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we'll, I mean, we can, we'll revisit it again next year, but the minutes do continue on and I think that, um, you know, there was several people who said, oh, I'm going to get a new shirt. So, um, I don't know conceivably how, how many we can actually, but it will be a fun problem to solve.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sarah Jo.
Thank you, Sarah.
Please thank everyone who helped. Oh, this may show town meeting Zoom. So that would be, sorry, baby, Josh. Um, so at this point, anybody that is joining us, um, has realized that they are muted. Um, we will have two hosts and hopefully a moderator. Um, the two hosts will, um, receive your questions, comments, and relay those to the moderator, who will then relay those to the select board. The meeting norms are if you are not being called on by the moderator to voice your concerns for the town meeting budgets, whatever we're talking about, um, that you would remain muted, um, so that there's no feedback, you know, inadvertent feedback. If anybody was with us last week, they know that Sam was giving us quite a bit of feedback just by having a microphone that was, you know, rubbing against his beard and it created quite an issue. You know, it's, it's, it's part of this. None of this is ideal. I'd like to be in the town hall with all the community members, but that's, that's not gonna happen this year, so. Um, as far as the way it's gonna be handled, we will be discussing items four through 22 and all their sub-paragraphs and items. We request that everybody comes prepared with the town warrant and their questions prepared. It would be ideal if we could answer questions once during the meeting, so that everybody is on the same page and we don't have to repeat ourselves. Does anybody else have anything to add to that? Uh, Wednesday night, uh, the 24th at 7 o'clock, we will start the meeting. The meeting will go until 9 o'clock. We will go as far as we can and pick up where we left off on Friday, the 26th at 7 o'clock. If we happen to go all the way through the agenda on the 24th, we will start over again on the 26th. Tammy, I forgot that, yes.
Did I forget to mention that it's recorded?
Yes.
And people can review it?
Yep, I'm not sure if they can hear that, but the meeting will be reported, um, on the 24th and available through Northwest Access TV for viewing before the 26th meeting. So if you are unable to make it on the 24th, but would like to see what was discussed, to see if your questions have been answered, it will be available and you will hopefully be able to put that link on the town website. Anything else that I forgot?
Hey, Josh?
Yeah, Sam, go ahead.
Um, at the, at the normal, regular town meetings, we start out with asking if there's any corrections, uh, for the town report. How are we gonna fit that into the informational meeting?
Um, I'm not sure. That is something that we have, uh, we haven't thought about at this point, um, yeah. The moderator usually asks for the previous town meeting minutes to be accepted or amended. I am open to suggestions via select board or any other patrons. I almost feel like that should be a town meeting day thing. It's not so much the informational part, though, maybe I'm wrong. I.
I, I think we need to, we, I think we need to ask for their, I mean, we usually get some good input or corrections, if you will, things that we've overlooked in the town report. So I think that's very important to acknowledge at the beginning. As for how to fit it in, not sure.
Right. Uh, I would agree. I think it would have to be Wednesdays, but I think we would also have to open it up on Friday, in case there was anything else that somebody was not able to attend on Wednesday, like, you know. Um, I guess, Sam, you're, you're correct. I guess that could be the first order of business, is accepting the previous year's minutes, uh, accepting them tentatively on Wednesday, pending no, uh, alterations on Friday's meeting. Accepting them completely on Friday.
But I was actually talking about the, the minutes, yes, from the prior meeting, but usually people find corrections for this year's, uh, town report. So that's what I was kind of looking at.
You have something in particular, Sam, that you found?
I have not, but, um, usually somebody finds something.
I have, I'm sure I have something I got mistaken around, or double under, but I haven't found anything this year, but go through the corrections usually from half hour, one of the reports I can put in.
I'm not sure if they can hear you, Abby, so. There's, there's a microphone right there. Abby Miller was saying that she has bounced up previously. I, I guess that would be kind of a, a moving target, Sam. If somebody came up with something, we could a, address it, but I don't know how we would.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, do you, that the regular town meeting days, uh, we start with that. If there's any corrections or amendments to be made to this year's town report. And, um, I don't think I've ever found anything, but people out there usually do. So I was just, I wanted to give them a chance to voice their, uh, corrections or concerns.
Certainly we should be able to take this small amount of time for corrections in our town report, but the, we must remember that ultimately these meetings are to, uh, answer questions about the budget for the following year. And if we get tied up too deeply in, uh, making minor corrections in the town report, uh, we might not have time that we need to discuss the budget. Just my two bits.
Well, it sounds like in the past, there haven't been.
There hasn't been much, yeah. And I think, like.
Abby said, uh, something was done this year.
Yeah, and I think, Sam, just to acknowledge your question, I think if somebody sees something wrong, whether we give them the option to point it out or not, they're going to point it out. It's just the nature of the beast, you know, somebody's gonna say, you know, item seventeen, you know, there's, just throwing that out there.
Yep. I just wanted, I just wanted to bring it up. It's, like I said, it's just a normal part of the meeting process. Like you, yeah, I agree. They will bring it up if they find something. So I just, I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, and I think, you know, using the word "normal" in, in this year's town meeting adventures, I'll call it, is, is, is not something we're gonna be able to do. I, I understand. I, I hope people, you know, come to the meeting ready to discuss stuff, because, you know, we hope that's, you know, we hope people are looking this over and looking for things. But a- as far as the "normal," it's gonna be as normal as we can get it, doing it in our living rooms on a computer screen, so.
Agreed.
I think that covers the Zoom section. Hey, Abby. Hello?
Hello.
Would you turn the mic towards you, please?
See, I've been, I've had a couple of things coming for tonight, just to kind of clean up things with next week being my last week. I just thought we were, kind of just getting kind of moving forward. I am me, deep in the middle of FEMA at the moment. I'm not sure if there's a plan. There is. I'm fine staying on board doing FEMA. It is already reimbursed for FEMA. As the board so chooses. We do have a new contract for FEMA and the ball is moving very quickly. We just had a conference call this morning with them for the afternoon.
If, if I may interject, the two point contacts from the town are Abby Miller and Mac Newell. This was pretty much told to us by FEMA. They said one should be the road commissioner, the other one should be the treasurer, and they didn't want, quote unquote, any interfering select board members on the, on this board. I have been acting as liaison between Abby and Mac and the select board. And Abby has been doing a good job, and as she stated, we've finally gotten a FEMA representative. Who knows what he's doing? And it actually worked for FEMA doing this type of work, instead of someone who came from some other department as a fellow, and they didn't have a clue.
And we're, we're in your app, getting to this from the storm, and they're back to the light at the end of the tunnel, that we're gonna be bringing first. Some time in the next little bit with some of these projects. So I'll share it and use it in Vermont, local and remote as well, which makes it nicer, too. But the ball is moving quickly with it. Finally, we're gonna be pretty much, it sounds like, easy to buy because there's gonna be a ball keeps up rolling. They rearranged how our projects were set up. It doesn't matter what, you know, one project had five rows in it, but two of the rows are held up with FEMA mitigation, so it's gonna take longer, but three rows are down. We already paid out pocket for it. They rearranged it as best as they were allowed to, kind of re-grouped some of those roads, so we can actually submit. Mac and I are gonna be next Tuesday, actually, we're gonna be, and go through everything from November first till now, that we pay out of pocket. We can submit for a lot of that network book rolling. That will help raise actual, as far as the road account goes, because during the same last patch of the road account, we've got to pay upfront for everything. So that will help replenish and kind of carry through the taxes again. Exactly. We're over leave for this going back because it's.
As I saw, everyone knows, we had nothing to do with the grouping of these roads. They asked for description damages, and our wayward representative grouped them up arbitrarily. And it is made extremely difficult to get a given project done. There are a lot of roads that are done, but we can't apply for payment because the project itself isn't done. Abby, we're working, it's all sorry, we're working on regrouping these so that we can get paid. And this, Paul, whoever's last name, doesn't make any culture, has been very instrumental in this, and Abby's worked with him very closely. So hopefully, we can get paid some lease partially. Abby, do you have any rough idea as to the timeline? Like, you know, when, when do we?
We're filing an extension for a year because per the original FEMA contract with it all, we have until this July. Obviously, the weather up here is gonna prevent us from probably even starting anything until July. Once the rust is completely out of the ground, probably we have, um, BoPak, River Crest and the Bridge, that's gonna be FEMA probably most of this year. We're gone if that gets completed in March, so we can go for that. And then we're waiting. Um, Wady Road and Jordan Road are in mitigation, having to deal with kind of culvert stuff, but we got pretty much today to get that kind of out of there, get a solid ballpark number, what that's gonna cause, and hopefully they're gonna put pressure on mitigation to get that out.
These, these projects have been sitting on litigation committees doorstep for over six months.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not questioning FEMA. I'm wondering if, because you very carefully said that you would remain as our contact for the town. You've got a history with this project. You know about what's going. I'm wondering if, if you're taking another job, if, how that's gonna affect it. Is it something you're gonna be able to handle? Is the timeline unacceptable for you?
Oh, yeah. I already, I already started. My, I'm working from home. So only day that I won't be home are Fridays with it, so I'll be working from home, and it's not a whole time. It's still, and I still don't have a roster to run that.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if, if we went that way, that it wasn't gonna be something that was gonna overwhelm you.
Mac and I are gonna meet next week and kind of match up, like, the dollars and cents stuff. So we can A, do a draw for our FEMA loan that we have, the line credit that we have, with the main super punish, the road account, all of that will get reimbursed. And to get the workbooks, the incentive workbooks that we have to fill out with FEMA, I'm very thankful, really. Kind of, but, but we have to cross our teeth that our eyes with it. During speaking invoices, pulling the deal a lap up. So I'm basically gonna go more and more from the time that the storm happened till now, and pull out all of the FEMA expenses, and I can pull out all of the backup, because we have to group it, our project number. Some stuff has already been submitted. Tyler, our engineer, has submitted a few inquiries on a few projects. Some of the projects, we just have to send in a contract or invoice, and we need other projects for when all the work that I write them, we have to provide a little bit more detail there, so I'm hoping in the next two weeks, we'll have a better dollar figure amount on those, so. But time I might, no, I, if I didn't have the time, I, I probably wouldn't do it, because this is important to kind of make my back, but I'm just gonna be working at home a lot every week, so.
At present, estimated expenses from the town, we haven't been reimbursed for our upwards of two hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand, somewhere around there.
We've probably just paid out recently in the last few months to just contract between BoPak being poured down, Hook Road, and Throw Ridge. Kind of, trying just to contract, and that's not, we don't have any merit costs, and that's not our, our road group losses.
Sam, when this revamping, we'll get a vast majority of that back soon. Well, one of the things that was done was the bridge project was split into, it was split into demolition phase and the rebuilding stage, so demolition stage is done. That was somewhere around ninety thousand dollars by itself.
That's a, yeah, an idea itself, and all of the ties are coming here across. There's a lot of permitting and stuff involved with that.
But now that's, that's a complete job.
Just a preparation, back there, he's, uh, Paul, sending a new project number for that, so he'll have to send everything over in the next week.
Correct. The other two that are in litigation, still are Wady Road, which is a medium-sized box culvert, where that first four-foot diameter corrugated metal culvert is. I had to have wall there to re-divert the water so it doesn't wash out down. And as Gary just stated, on the upper end of the Waterville Mountain Route, where there's twin twenty-four-inch diameter culverts, a shallow, three-sided ridge constructed there. Basically, it's going to be cast and placed lights and a slab set on top that's gonna be exposed. It's so shallow there that's only gonna get a little bit. Anyhow. Little bit up there, but it's stuff that we need to discuss. It's, it's, it's refreshing. This, this new guy is, is refreshing. It's absolutely amazing. Rufus, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use names. Our other FEMA representative rarely spoke to us, was unavailable for phone calls, didn't have the answers we wanted, and messed things up royally. Paul, in two weeks is undone. Oh, almost a year's worth of mess-ups, I, I think it's, I, me, most of you, you, you didn't only get yourself in one.
Yeah, I knew it was gonna be a lengthy process, but I, it was, it was very frustrating. I got the call from State by trying to go, if you start getting money, and the whole was obligated that nothing had done for sure at that point, so. It's, like Lance said, very recession, and right at the end of the tunnel, but we can actually get some of this money that we've been paying out, get the roads up to standard for it now. Moving forward to that, I'm going. Well, Abby, we wanna thank you. It's always for you. Thank you for the service and the force. We very much appreciate it. So, good luck in your new adventure, though. Yeah, it's nice that you get to stay home with little ones. But little, little one is driving me crazy right now. Well, we thank you. I'm ready for a little bit less snow, so we can either, like, throw on outside.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the most, I keep pointing, there's, there's talk of the snow.
Right, right. Just gotta make sure they don't come with the snow back. Crazy. Okay, awesome. All right, the other thing I said, you know, about signature for, like, talk to the bank, kind of gave them a heads up that we're gonna be swapping over, because not next week, but a week after, it's payroll warrants, all that comes as. So something that can happen, and I think they have them pretty well half-prepared, are gonna be the finalization on select board members and who the treasurer is, and if there's gonna be an assistant or backup person for checks signature, in case the new treasurer isn't available, something happens. Something that we should really have. That will maybe get done ASAP. It may be, be on you guys next week, for the new persons to come in and sign all that. One of the things with that will be going over, setting up the authority for loans, open accounts, all that stuff. I have the old one we can use as a reference point, but we're not to go teaching to the library and interest the community. So I'll try to get that streamlined and set up as much as possible. I, I forgot about TDO, we can call them this week, get that rolling. Even, we may have to go in person to the bank to do that, as far as the ones that are signing checks and stuff. So that will just keep that on your radar, pretty much March third, that we're wanting to get that rolling, because they have the process that on their end, we'll need to have the new treasurer able to sign up and check this, along with me. So that's, that's on me. And I did talk to Hope, who's who we got with, who we go with for all of our municipal loans through community bank. Her and I played a chat the other day. The town will be good now, I'm not even sure, way around it, unfortunately. She did say something last year, I, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to always immediately get that one's?
We, last year.
I feel like we have it pretty, pretty much set up, but.
I believe you're right.
I, I have to look at my notes from when we made the first draw, but this year, there's a thirty-day waiting period. So if your budget's passed, all the budgets passed by the fall, this week, everything needs to get whole ASAP, because from my, the phone is established, it's set up, there's a thirty-day waiting period. I'm, I'm not sure, I see that can do what we did last year, and definitely have a community law setup.
I, I don't know if that was the difference, but we did have it set up ahead of time, actually.
I know, yeah, because we met with her two, three weeks before our meeting, and got everything rolling.
Yes.
But, yeah, there's something new this year, the thirty-day, like, contingency period or something, so I'll, I'll get clarification on that. But as long as we can, if, once Mac and I figure out FEMA money has to be, the road account will be fine. My concern with the road account right now, there's that thirty-three thousand dollar in the road account. Our rebel that wanted to do, I held off on this warrant until the end of March, but we get more of those principal interest that earlier we paid. So I had capital off moving out of the warrant today, because we don't have the funds at this moment. But by the next warrant, we should hopefully have, be able to make the draw off the line credit. That will kind of cover the road account behind me, because they don't get any state aid until pro, or at least I think they go some extra, but. So really, two nine and a half balances for the beginning. General fund is getting done as well. And you have the, the fire agreement contract coming up, too. So we need to stay on top of, and that's true, to stay on top of those balances where it's at, because things we watch is getting concerned, kind of the cash flow with everything, like, rolling and stuff. So with my passing out, it's, um.
When the, when the money comes in from FEMA, when that comes in, will that help offset that? I don't think it'll be an account needed in any way.
The way that it's set up right now is, if I work for the whole, to get us the line credit, we went through projects all coming up. And right now, the way I'm doing it is like thirteen million in here for decent amount. I'm only requesting exactly what the warrant amount is, and it gets transferred to the road, and we go to check on the roads and track them in. So when we get the FEMA cash, like, when FEMA physically pays up, that money needs to go back on the line credit. So it's just basically where, is there advance until FEMA pays us, and then we just need to get it back. But to answer your question, yes, in the long run, but that's why we're gonna make the draw off the line credit, kind of now, knowing that we're gonna get reimbursed, otherwise, we're not gonna make it through, because we're gonna be, like, the bridge account is actually gonna have to be used for our matching seven and a half percent on BoPak.
Yep.
And the town's looking at ballpark, minimum seventy-five gallons, one hundred, depending on the final costs of everything.
Estimate was around seventy, in the seventies, but that was from last fall.
Our total, as total cost between our estimate right now is one point five. One point two-ish of that being certainly BoPak. We can, a lot cheaper than we expected on the demolition of it. But I don't know if it's just gonna work late at this point in time, and just waiting for it to dawn, and then they open their down. And culverts and everything, I don't know if it's there. So it's, it's hard, hard to say, but in your question, yeah, essentially, that that's a lot of the road, a lot of the road budget. Cash front issues at the moment are, you know, really good. You're gonna be having to pay out over a hundred thousand dollars a month. That's how you come up to this point. That's how you come up to this point.
Right, so.
So.
Sure.
Um, but I haven't even listened to that.
That, I understand correctly, bridge was set up. Was under seven hundred thousand dollars, not seventy thousand, it was modest there, sorry.
Yeah.
The total, total estimate that FEMA for that project was one point two six. Something like that, over, over one point two million.
Yeah. Um, auditors. We're gonna have a little auditor, probably aren't specifically having an auditor. Um, I think Courtney is still on as of right now, um, the top of her, I think she's gonna be starting to work full time. It's over one hundred the next year, I don't believe, also, we do have a conversation with her. Jason Bass term is technically up, um.
Is he on, um, so it's, you know, this year?
No, because he technically, he moved down to labor school, so technically he cannot run for the position again. However, if he were to be appointed, he would stay on, have auditor. At least we got him to basically, but no, he would like to stay on, but he would need to be appointed, he can't run for election again. And I don't believe that anybody runs for auditor this year.
So, so if that resolution's not filled by a.
I don't know how for next two, but.
Right, but we can, we can appoint after it's not filled, right?
Because I believe, I don't believe Pat.
Natalie Vettick is staying up west in Ohio until such time as another passes and that may not be.
Right.
Soon it may not.
Right, so the reason I'm bringing it up is the auditors back and here's why January I first heard it, with handing off my books to the new person. So that's gonna be out of the agenda, we need to deal with right off, because we'll need to jump on it. I don't believe anybody ran for auditor.
Right, his, his term is up and nobody ran for it.
Right.
So nobody gets it.
You could call him up and say we want our point.
We could appoint him, yes.
I think it would, I don't know if it would be for a year, you have to double, Kathy would be able to kind of explain the term.
I was talking with Kathy before the meeting and she said that anything that's not filled via vote is an appointment for a one year term and then it goes back for an election again.
Yeah.
It would be that, it would be a, yeah, to fill out the term.
Yeah, that's why I got, I got carried away with your, 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 your term and you are running again, so. Okay, so that was just my other thing, the thing, the F Y R on that, I shouldn't think of that long, I mean, that would probably be two of the biggest ones that we have. So where to look so.
Did we still have this year?
Pat didn't resign. She's still on the board. She just is not.
So just Courtney and Deuce.
Courtney and Jason, um, did the whole audit, I suppose, on this year. It went very smoothly. Um, I, they did a great job. I don't think I had them in here at the same time just because of everybody's step home is so different. But it went very well. I was actually impressed with how smoothly it went and how quickly it went. They're just having two of them for the walk. I mean, they reviewed every change, action, match, it, chat it back, the base, same and warrants, everything, so it was very time consuming. Um, plus we had much happy stuff to audit, but, um, Kenny helped us with some of the just basic data entry stuff of it all while she was here and that helps take up a lot of kind of, kind of digging through records and stuff, so it went really well. I think that's a couple of the books and everything this year, so. Only, only so this way you're believing now. Interpreten you this week?
Yeah, Wednesday and Friday.
Courtney, um, are we on Zoom for it or anything or? Any questions for the?
If you're available through Zoom, I think.
I really do Zoom, can't really be down here.
No, that's good, you would enjoy the nights here in Zoom, but, yep, no, Zoom works fine as long as you have a decent internet connection.
Absolutely.
Good.
Believe it or not, and it's consolidated, but I can see the high speed box in my house.
There you go.
Okay.
The lucky one.
I know. Um, okay, so if I had a headshot via Zoom, um, there, there's any new questions that was at a day to day. Next question I had is kind of a board game plan as far as you guys want me to sit around and train, how much do you want me to sit around training if you do? And it was budget wise, I think it's really kind of thanks for so much of that. So just trying to figure out what the, what the game plan is there because it's not just gonna be like there's what happens, good luck property tax season, as much as I would love to do, do that, I, I won't unless the board doesn't want me to train. Um, so we're not.
Even know, the knowledge is a, a deal.
Well, we don't know who our treasurer is yet.
No.
I, I think it's important.
Candidates, right?
Yes, it's important that whoever wins is gonna need some guidance. Um, whether it be a lot or a little depends on the person, individual, um, but if you would be willing to spend some time with the new treasurer, it would be, I really appreciate it.
Yep, it's not, I mean, I'm not gonna be here, everything off the, um, there, yeah, they're a pretty good finder for me, but the only problem with that is, is we changed software, yeah, I changed some of the spreadsheets and a lot of stuff, so process of that is kind of there, but QuickBooks is a lot more, usually for name line things, however, I think that'll be a lot easier for the new treasurer coming in. Um, and some of that I will push based on my other stuff in here, so I, I didn't do some of the spreadsheets. It's probably give us terrible data entry as far as having, having so many places on some of them. So I'm gonna feel for them, what worked, what didn't work on their aspect and maybe kind of hash out and, and even for the treasurer, if they want to do some of this stuff, I mean, it's just more that work on their part, I guess. Um, yeah, so as far as that goes and as far as, I mean, the only stuff with me still through the year then, which probably has to roll around, that's just verifying himself in the making. There was not, I still have that over the property, I think.
You're welcome.
I like it, like you trust me. Uh.
And what, you mean because of the extending?
No, the extending really went better than I anticipated, like that was my first assessment, but that actually went a lot better than I expected. Just as far as the state, getting a lot of stuff with layers, getting press, like home said, that very tricky stuff. So don't forget, when you file your taxes, file it for the. Um, it was just a lot, oh, I've got, I just have one property, there's a mix up with a spam, one person filed their taxes, so, you know, state agents didn't go where they're supposed to go. I have a house and I'll hash out because we've been having, like, one had a state for two months, so it was cleaned up and we're over. So. Yep. So I'm, I'm sure my mom's still there, maybe, I don't know what they're gonna do, and it's not immediate at this point, I don't know, but state team, I might have potentially gone up the wrong parcel, they've identified, so they could turn into a mess.
State missile, right?
Uh, no, not here.
Awesome.
Maybe a resident hopes more that they thought they did, but I don't know that until the state tells me if they're gonna stay too bad, let's say if it is, or here's the change in the dust kind of everything, so. Should we continue on? But the only thing I need to discuss and figure out is just what you want with your salary, like for my time, I spent seeing her, and then my time with training.
As a side note, anytime she puts back, now puts in for FEMA, can be added in and, uh, reimbursed.
We have one separate project, they create a whole project for all the administrators, so we went out to, it was about me on for Matt, um, for myself, for anybody that's you guys, that's one hour, that would come in, all of that's reimbursed, go through their administration, they're in the trade costs, they create a separate project, we just met all that now.
Obviously, we wouldn't know how long it would take on training, so we don't, we have and what their knowledge is.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question, and like I said, I already started my new job, so there's gonna have to be some more time for that, it's not gonna be after what I am now, but I want. No, it, the hard part about training for the shop is a lot of stuff will happen next year and a lot of stuff doesn't happen until the time our colleagues are in. Over the basics, they get through the day, day, start with the warrants, the deposits, the reports, the reports are even sort of different. Just a heads up, um, because of QuickBooks, I can actually input the budget into QuickBooks, so you don't have to move over to the spreadsheet that I made. That'll be a QuickBooks report and we can also run a profit and loss. So I'm not quite enough, this is the money that came in, the money that went out, just give you more like the business side analysis of you know, actually catch out sort of as a, so you can speak to the best, there's a lot more report opportunities to just be prepared for next month, which I'm gonna, I will do that to be before I'm done, will look a little different. And I'll, I'll.
By the way, did you have a, a number that you were thinking for those for the hourly, I mean, I don't, gee, hourly now. We pay, uh, zero twenty-five dollars an hour of training. Correct? I think I do remember this. Is that a reasonable number? We'll make a motion, if we pay Abby twenty-five dollars an hour for her training time and for her time of working on the FEMA project, the October, uh, two thousand nineteen storm project. Uh, by the way, that will be reimbursable through FEMA, anything on that. Uh, any seconds, I'll let him know. Motion to name seconded, all those favor, I, I, any opposed? And we're going to lie on that. These dudes, you're muted.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute, Ite.
Okay.
Any questions for me? Hey, look on the gray side, this is the last we even have to listen to you ramble on about budget stuff. Why not? I know.
You think, you would think that they could sit far enough apart so they wouldn't have to wear a mask to talk.
Yeah.
Because you just can't hear anything.
Right.
There's a lot of air over there too.
Yeah, right here. Because it's so hollow. See, Danielle, pull the table.
Hey, you guys, Heather, okay. That's not fun.
Well, no, let's set that feedback that we need to have. Uh, so I can move a little bit of, can you, just to address that issue, Roger, can we how much of a spread can you get, looks like, uh, we could add a short break.
Well, you're gonna need.
So we can get further apart, is that possible or is it?
Is Sam gonna be, is he gonna be zooming or is he gonna be on the panel?
I guess that would be with Sam, I, I imagine Sam is.
Uh, Sam's pretty set zooming, you know, I'm, uh, here to, you give you guys feedback.
I would zoom, but I don't, no, my internet doesn't work well enough.
I, I get that, I'm saying.
My internet's not good at all. I don't. I'm probably the most susceptible here. If the rest of the people here comfortable, I can take my mask off.
I'm out if you're taking masks.
Let's say.
I'm out if you're taking.
I can leave the camera running, probably leave the room.
That's, that's wildly responsible.
Okay. No, that's fine, that's feedback we need.
I think if you sit, everyone's just gonna have to sit close to the microphones and just be really, really aware of.
But you're not talking to the room, you're talking to the, the folks that are right there trying to participate in the town's business.
So you talk to the.
He's gonna get closer to us, make sense.
Before.
We will try Heather to speak, uh, directly into the mic and get better. We appreciate your feedback and uh, we, we're, we're trying. This is new to us and it's not ideal, but it's what we have to work with at this point. Abby, did you have anything else?
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Abby. Welcome. One?
Yeah. I, I know I spilled my card, so I don't know where. You're welcome. Brad, Josh, I'll touch.
Okay. Okay, we have, uh, no visitors for today. Uh, Mac is not here for the road report. Does anybody have any comments on, uh, road conditions or issues with the roads? They look, they look good to me so far this year. By the way, some of our family will last for weeks.
Yeah, I, I've noticed that there definitely some more material down.
Okay.
Which is good.
And then we push it back, maybe we want to put that back. Yep. Preparation for we got four inches up my way. East face, we still probably got more than that was due. Uh, all right, review the mail, let's see, anybody else have it? We have a road access purpose request by Rock Allen or over on, uh, Yam Blue Roads. Um, am I doing better with the speaker here instead? Is everybody?
You're, you're doing fine Lance, um, only thing is Dent needs to look more than mic when he talks.
Okay, well, please give us the feedback because, uh, but it's not intentional. Our intent by doing this is to make sure everyone can see here, um, and if you can't, let us know, please. Um, let I, I have my opinions. It's for sure, for sure. To that, access that.
Just gotta, just gotta think, oh, just enough to let you know that it is impossible to hear your comments, well, and to understand what you folks are saying during your meeting. It is more annoying that information, but you need to rethink your informational meeting by the way, fourth and sixth quickly. Unless folks have headsets, they aren't going to know what you have on the block.
Well, um.
And I just sent.
This is. This is top of the line equipment, um, we have been, uh, it, you know, Northwest Access TV has been nice enough to let us use this. Um, and I haven't seen a bill from him yet. I don't know if there's one coming or not, but he's shaking his head no. Uh, this is top of the line equipment. If we were to go with what the town has, we'd be using a, uh, well, what would it be, we'd be starting.
Hand in a string.
We'd be streaming from the rooftops, uh. You know, I, I can't stress it enough, this is not an ideal situation, this is not a permanent thing, hopefully, um. But at, at this point, this is what we have. All of the information is in the town report, town warrant, page eight. Uh, we're going to go over it step by step on um, on Wednesday and again on Friday. Uh, if you have questions, there is also the chat feature, uh, which is the button in the center bottom of your Zoom. I don't know what you want to call it, home screen, you can click on that and send a question, comment, concern through that. It will be seen instantly by our moderator host and. And we can see it here at the board, we have a TV in front of us here, so we can also see it. Uh, this, this is what we've got, folks, um, not trying to be rude, disrespectful to anybody, but we're making the best out of what we've got and we've, we've got to figure out a way to work with it. I hope that didn't anger anybody too much, but if it did, we're, we're welcome to solutions instead of complaints. We're doing the best we can here. It is not our intent to upset anybody or leave you outside the loop by intentionally having a poor connection. We're we've got people who know what they're doing here. As Josh said, we've got good equipment. Most of the problems seem to be in how we're using the equipment, so we'll, we'll endeavor to do better.
Was that all we had for mail?
No, I have one other.
Okay.
Uh, this is an access for Rock Allen on the south end of Gambler Road, on the property he owns.
Right, this is Michelle Murphy's.
Uh, he's discussed it with me and he has discussed it with Mac, Mac has inspected the site. And, uh, he sees no problems with it.
And this is strictly an access for agricultural use for, I'm guessing, sugar?
This is his sugaring operation, yes, he's gonna build, eventually, he'd like to build a shed for a, a storage tank, I believe it was.
Okay. And this is below the access for
Ramsey's house.
Ramsey's house, okay.
It's below Ramsey's?
Be on the Jeff's side. It's on the very south end, right, of Gambler Road.
Almost that little shack, it should be, right, there's usually a little shack right there.
Yep.
And Pajus. No, Cedric Pajus.
That was a little shack, a little shack on the very corner.
It was his home.
Was it home, it was very big.
Yeah, it was there.
So I suggest, uh, that it's, it's appropriate for us to sign this.
Yeah.
I don't see anything wrong with the, uh, permit or the request.
I would agree, you said Mac's already done a site visit.
Yes, okay.
They talked to Lance and to Lance and to Mac.
Yep, okay, yep.
I knew we talked to you, I wasn't sure if he did a site visit or not.
Yeah, this has been ongoing for several months, he first approached me uh, early last fall, I believe.
Ben.
Uh, the other piece of mail we have is the boundary. Pardon?
Does that get posted like a building permit?
It's be, uh, Mac hangs on to them until the work is completed uh, to his satisfaction and then they will be returned. Uh, we'll listen to Mac's approval. And, uh, this, there's a place, another page for the select board to sign for approval. So this is just, this is just a access, permission to continue with the access.
Is it warned for like thirty days, is that what it's warned for?
No, you can start work I believe as soon as we sign it.
Oh, so it doesn't have to be warned?
No.
Okay.
No, I think you're referring to a, a building.
Right.
If they were putting a building there, yeah.
Building permit where you have to
No, I didn't hear that.
The neighbors have an issue.
No, Mac, as the road commissioner, goes and checks and makes sure that the, um, you know, there's, it's not gonna interfere with any culverts. It's not on a
Or meets a B seventy-one standards.
Right. I'm, you know, slope grade, floodplain, all that stuff. Culvert size, yeah, hill.
Power lines.
Yeah, we don't worry about those, Green Mountain will fix them.
That's your problem. All right, the other piece of mail we have is a boundary and annexation survey, uh, it's an annual questionnaire, uh, if you remember last year, I did some work on it because we corrected the western boundary, south of Route thirty-six. On, uh, the maps didn't have it correct after the re-survey that was done in um, decade ago or so, I can't remember exactly what it was, but the map, uh, was corrected and approved.
Was that the meeting that you attended in Fairfield?
No, that had to do with the same spot, but, uh, right near it, but, uh, they acknowledged it was uh, it was just a common boundary, um. Carl Zern was making a change to his current use project and it happened to be on a piece of property that, uh, laid up against the western boundary of Bakersfield, so they thought that we should be included in that. I went and, uh, didn't see any problems and said, thank you very much, and came home. So this one, uh, I have looked at the map online, um, they did indeed make the corrections from last year, so there, all we need to do is one of us signs it and check the boxes, uh, our government does not have a boundary change to report.
We don't all have to sign that, correct?
No, just one, just sure. You have any other items that you'd like to discuss this evening, anybody?
Nope. Nope, I'll do this then.
What time are we getting here next? On, uh, Wednesday?
Meeting is set to start at seven. Um, I would recommend we get here probably a half hour beforehand. Um, I will probably be here at approximately six o'clock, so that we can set up all the speak, the mics and the cameras and everything, but I think a half hour would give us enough time to do sound checks, hopefully. Uh, Sam, if you could sign on at six thirty also?
Will do.
So that we can make sure that people out in the public can hear everything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what they just did, but you, uh, for the last, uh, ten minutes or so, you guys have all been sounding a lot better.
Okay, thank you for the feedback, Sam.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that. Motion that made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Um, it's eight eighteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move, have a good evening.